The zoning board appeals to order. Linda, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Ferrari?
Here.
Mr. Latif?
Here.
Mr. Doleman, he's not here yet. Mr. Daly?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mr. Beg?
Here.
Chairperson McGinnis?
Here. The first order of business is the approval from the July 2021 meeting. Is there anyone who'd like to make a motion on the minutes?
I make a motion to approve it.
There's a motion made. Is there a second?
I'm second.
The motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? I just want to point out that line 109 says Mary Hatch, and it should be Mary Hatch Drive.
Also, Madam Chairperson, just as a point of order, I noted that people who were not present for the meeting need to abstain when it comes time to vote for approval of the minutes rather than going ahead and just approving it. So as a matter of moving forward, just if people would make sure, and if you weren't present for the meeting, you got to abstain.
Correct.
So we do have that issue in the minutes. I don't know that it's fatal to the minutes. But we did have that issue that arose last meeting. So I just, as a matter of a point of order and a matter of reminder to the board members.
The motion's been made, seconded, and there was discussion. Linda, can you call the roll?
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Beg?
Staying.
Chairperson McGinnis?
Yes. So are we going to call the first case to order? Okay. Linda, can you please call the first case?
The appeal of Louis Benacristo for variance from Section 220-53B and Section 220-13 Schedule IC of the zoning ordinance of Town of Niskiuna as it applies to the property at 2221 Eastern Parkway, Niskiuna, New York, located in the R2 Medium Density Residential Zoning District, to maintain a 320-square-foot deck nearer to the property line than the existing structure and partially within the side yard setback. Section 220-53B allows, in addition to a non-conforming residential property structure, which brings the addition into a non-conforming side or rear yard no nearer to the side or rear property line than the existing structure and no nearer than half the distance specified in a particular residential zoning district. Section 220-13 Schedule IC requires a side yard setback of 15 feet. The existing house is 7 feet 6 inches from the side property line. Therefore, 7 feet 6 inches becomes the minimum required side setback. As constructed, the deck is 4 foot 6 inches nearer to the side property line than the existing structure and has a 3-foot side yard setback. Therefore, both a variance for being 4 feet 6 inches nearer to the side property line than the existing structure and 4 foot 6 inch side yard setback variance is required, are required. 10 notices were sent out. I received one response. The response was from Theodore Rodinsky. "I am in favor for the zoning board to grant Louis Benacristo the variance. There is no negative effect on surrounding properties. We are the neighbors directly behind 2221 Eastern Parkway."
Okay, thank you. I'd like to invite the applicant to come forward. So before you begin and stating your case, I want to let you know that we're operating with less than seven members right now of the board. You're required by law to have four affirmative votes for your case to be approved. It could be four out of six or four out of seven. If you choose, you can adjourn your case until it can be heard by a full board. Would you wish, do you wish to proceed?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm going to ask that you state your name and address for the record to speak in the microphone so that it can be recorded for the minutes. And please set forth your application for us.
My name is Louis Benacristo. I reside at 2221 Eastern Parkway, Niskiuna, New York, zip 12309. And I'm applying for, I'm confused about, acceptance for a variance to be granted for a deck in my backyard.
Okay. And did you, did you do anything to mitigate the need for the variance?
I filled out a form here. I met with Tom, Canuzola Building Inspector. I got the form. I filled out the five questions on the form, submitted it. I took a couple of pictures of the actual deck.
So what normally happens now is the information that you gave on the form, you would say to us. So for example, I'm, I can't live with the current deck because of X, Y, and Z. I set out to do this. This is in my wag.
Okay, sorry. No, the, it was, the current deck that was built was replacing an existing structure that was kind of breaking down, pretty much falling, falling down. So I, I actually called here and asked how far from the fence on the right side of my property over would it be to, when I build this, like, how far do I have to be? I was told, I was told three feet from the deck, actually. So I, when I was getting estimates to have the deck replaced, I told the contractor exactly that, you know, this is, I want it replaced with, you know, with this material. And it'd have to be three feet from the fence. My contractor said, okay, you know, he drew up the plan and he actually said, I'll take, you know, I'll submit the plan. I'll get the permit. And you really have, you know, nothing to worry about. We'll be in contact. So I thought everything was actually fine. You know, it's this, the deck is pretty much almost the same height-wise, everything as the previous one. I have a privacy fence that, you know, even from the front yard, you can't see the deck, you know. No neighbors have ever had any issues with it. I've been in the residence for 20 years. I have a very good rapport with my neighbors. So I just happened to notice on, I can't remember the exact date, a note on my, on my door that the inspector came and left a detailed thing that the permit wasn't, you know, the zoning thing wasn't according to the, to the guidelines. I never received anything, nor did I really hear anything from my contractor. I immediately called him. And he kind of disregarded, if you will. So I immediately came here the next day at nine o'clock in the morning and spoke with Tom to handle the situation because I would have never, never gone through with anything if I knew that there was a problem. So that's kind of where I'm at right now. Tom kind of came, he helped me, showed me exactly what I had to fill out. So I filled it out, applied for it. That's, you know, kind of where I am here today. So it was more or less just me fixing it. I thought I was doing the right thing. I thought everything was okay and the permits were approved. I'd never got anything in the mail from me, nor did I hear anything from my contractor. So it was all kind of a shock to me when, when it actually happened.
Any questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Benacristo, just a couple of questions for you. You said you lived there 20 years at your current house?
Yeah, yeah, I think it's actually been.
And how old is that deck that you replaced?
It was, it was.
Did you build it, the old deck, or was it there?
It was there. And I, it was, it was basically kind of just breaking apart.
So the deck was there before you purchased the house?
There was one part, I actually had a little bit to it, but there was a part, and then so it was basically like eroding, if you will, because it was, it was.
I know, but my question is, before you, when you moved to that house, the deck was there?
Yes.
So you didn't build that deck?
I was, no, I was replacing the existing.
Like, you replaced it now, but I'm talking about 20 years ago. There was.
There was a little deck, yes. And I added on to.
You added to that?
Yes.
Okay. And when you added to that deck, how much did you add to it? And did you contact the town? Like you said, you contacted the town now to see.
The added, the added part was about eight, nothing wide. It was eight feet. It was about eight feet further into the yard. And I.
Okay, further, not to the side where you need to set back?
Not to the side, so just out straight.
Okay. And a couple of questions. Just when you called the town and they told you.
Three feet.
Three feet. Do you remember who you spoke with?
They, they directed me right to, it was a receptionist who answered. I asked, and she asked for my address. I told her the address and she said, oh, hang on, I'll put you in touch with the building inspector. I don't feel, I don't really remember the name. I don't know if it was Tom. But I wrote it down on the piece of paper that it was three feet from.
Okay. Do, do we remember that, Laura? Because I'd like to know that he was Mr.
Probably been somewhere in the month of.
Our department would never tell anybody three feet. It may be a miscommunication, but we would never tell anybody that you could build within three feet. There isn't any code in the Town of Niskiuna that allows you to build within three feet of a lot line. There's no exception. So our, that wouldn't have come from us. You may have misunderstood.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Laura. So just clarifying what you said. The deck that you had there, you, you rebuilt it, the exact shape that you had in there?
The current one?
Yes. Is, did you, did you add any more footage?
Yeah, I did. Because I, when I called and asked if I could make it bigger, because the side yard, I mean, like, I don't want to use the term like useless space. I know they say that sometimes with like houses, but the side yard was really not being used. So my initial plan was, well, if I can make it a little bit bigger, it'll be useful.
So, so please tell me, tell me the, the previous deck size and the current deck size, if you don't mind.
The boards were 16 wide on the original, and this was 20.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Yeah, a couple, a couple of other questions, sir. If you turn to your left up on the screen there, I believe it's the diagram that was submitted with your application. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. The, I take it, and this is going to be a real intelligent question, the big ground structure is a pool, above-ground pool?
It is.
Okay. The deck that you had at the house that predate, that, that was there when you built it, obviously, did that predate your pool?
It did.
Okay. So at some point in time, you added the pool to the backyard?
Yeah.
Now, it appears from the diagram that there, the pool and the deck, as it appears there, are essentially connected. The deck goes all the way up to the pool. Is that right?
Yeah, I made it, yes.
Okay. The, the prior deck that you had, you said you didn't come any further towards your lot line to the right. You just extended it back so it would go to the pool?
Correct.
Okay. The, the structure that we see there on the screen obviously comes out even beyond the edge of your house. Is that fair?
Yes, it, yes, it does.
Okay. So be fair to say that the, the, the deck as it exists is not on the same footprint as the old deck. It's a bigger footprint.
It's bigger, yeah.
Was there, Laura, any kind of, when the prior deck was put in, do we have any record of, of the owner of the house coming to us for any type of, any type of variance permit, anything like that?
That's what I was just looking for in the file. There's definitely no variance on file for the deck. I was just looking to see if we had a record of what it looked like prior to it being rebuilt.
Okay. So would the pool have had to have been inspected when it was put in?
Yes.
And can we assume as a board that the, the, the deck that existed when the pool was put in, it was in compliance with our zoning requirements?
Yeah, I would, I would assume that. I mean, you have to take into account what he's saying, plus the fact that above-ground pools, they can have removable ladders and things like that. So like, if the inspector saw a clear violation of the deck at that time, I think he would have noticed or said something, but.
We don't have any record of any.
But we don't have any record of it.
Okay. So, so I guess my question is, is your, your builder got a permit to do this work, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And that, I assume, was, and maybe I'm wrong, but that's what initiated the investigation by Mr. Canizo and ultimately led to the, the violation or the, the idea that, that it violated the zoning ordinance. Is that fair?
Yeah, sounds like, yeah.
When you ask, now, just so I get the sequence right, when, when your builder came in to build this, who gave the builder the dimensions that the new deck was going to be?
I pretty much just told him, like, I want it pretty much the same, just a little bit, just, just wider.
And you made it wider, in other words, out to the lot line because of this call you claim you had with the town? Or did you make it out? I'm, I'm trying to find out the sequence because.
No, I just, I made it just wider, not like, just wider out to the, to the right.
Right, towards the lot line?
Yeah.
So in other words, what used to be a deck the size of whatever it was you inherited, you then expanded it now, instead of just expanding it back toward the pool, you also expanded it toward the lot line this time?
This, yes, on the new one.
Okay. And, and those, that expansion to the lot line, which is why you're here, who told you you could do that, or did you just do it?
Well, when I called and I heard the three feet, that's when I said, okay. I met out, I went out and measured. And I said, from my fence to where it was, I had 10 and a half feet. So I was like, oh, if I can go three feet, then I could make it four feet wider and I still would be incompliently, in compliance with the, with the three-foot amount, or whatever that was told.
Now.
So that's the only reason why I asked is when he came, I said, I know, like, I don't mean, I don't know a lot about building materials, but I know, like, you know, deck boards have like, you know, 12, 16. And I was like, well, if I can do 20, then we don't have, doesn't have to be any, you know, cutting and wasting. It could just be boom, 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 placed down and we wouldn't have to worry about it.
The left side of the deck, as you're standing with your back at the house, looking at your pool.
Okay.
You expanded the deck to the right, towards the lot line, correct?
Yep.
Is there a reason you couldn't expand? I have a picture of it.
Oh, yeah, because it was definitely on the edge of the house.
I have a picture of it. Is there a reason that you can't, couldn't have expanded the deck to the left in towards the yard?
I thought about it. There's, I have a front, I have a door that goes to the, out to the backyard. And then there's like a bunch of concrete. So I was, and there's a patio, a concrete patio. So I didn't really want to, if I pushed it, I can't think of the dimensions in my head, but going four feet to the left, I did think about that, too. I didn't want it to be with the stairs. It would probably have blocked the, the door out into the backyard. So I didn't really know if it would actually.
Okay, so there's a door at the rear of your house going, running from, what, a family room or a kitchen?
Yeah, I don't have, I mean, I have, the front door and the back door are exactly, like, if you walk through, and you just walk straight, you'll, you'll kind of go through the house. So it's an entranceway that literally goes from kind of where my driveway is, and you just keep walking straight through, and it goes right out to the back.
Right. But that, that back door is, is a floor-level back door?
It's a floor, it's a floor, yeah.
You don't go down any steps to then get to the ground?
No.
So had you, how high is your deck? Tell me how many steps you'd have to go down, go from your, your deck to your, to the ground?
Five steps up and then you're on.
Okay, so so you're talking at least, what, about three feet?
So if I walk, pretty much if I walk, if I was to walk outside of my, my house, or outside that back door, if I walk out and turn, I'd probably just take two steps and then you, you, you kind of go right out.
Right. But I'm, I'm saying from the ground to your deck, how high is it off the ground?
Four feet, maybe.
Okay, so if you had extended your deck to the left, instead of to the right, you would have A, blocked the door with the deck, which would have come up about three or four feet?
Probably, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I thought I saw something there. Maybe, maybe I'm mistaken. Is, is there some type of easement or something in that area as well?
Easement?
No?
I'm sorry?
In other words, is there, I, I don't know, what, what do you, is there, what kind, do you have town sewer and that type of thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there's not a leach field or not something?
No, 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 no.
Not something like that?
Town water, town sewer, yeah.
Is that just yard to the left of the deck?
Yeah, it's just yard that goes straight up, yep.
Okay.
Yep, it goes, yard that goes, it goes up and then.
So if I understand correctly, you did consider moving it to the left?
I did, I did. That was my initial plan, was to go to the left.
Okay.
And then looking at it, I was like, well, with, with that space and then the, and then the riser, the risers going down, the stairs going down, I'm not going to be able to get out, I won't be able to get out of the house.
The deck itself would block the back.
It would block the door, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just one clarifying question was on, on the original deck, how far was it from the side yard? Do you recall?
Oh, 10, 10, 10 feet. I think it was 10 feet 7 inches or something, right around.
So it was lined up with the house?
It was lined up with the, yeah, it came, yes.
And the other question I had was, the size of the deck, what caused you to increase the size? Was there?
Pretty much the reason why we, because my wife and I, we don't have any kids, but we pretty much are on it from the first day, the sun can come out till pretty much the last day you can be on it. We, it's, it's, it's pretty much our, our day off. We, we spend the whole time on the deck. And I wanted it a little bigger because we, a lot of times we have our family come over, and so we just wanted some extra room as we cook out, you know, and just have family functions and stuff. So we just went a little bit bigger.
Thank you.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understand everything. You hired a contractor. The contractor got a building permit. It was built, but it, it's not to our specifications. Laura, was there a building permit issued?
No. So we received a building permit application on March 29th from the contractor. On April 6th, it was denied by our building department with a 60-day waiting period on, yeah. But Linda's pointing out, we emailed it directly to the contractor because the contractor submitted the building permit in March. After the 60-day waiting period, we followed up with the applicant just to make sure that they truly didn't want to do the denial, didn't want to do the project. And at that time, the homeowner admitted that the deck had been built. And so then he came in, submitted a new building permit, which got a new denial, and that's why he's here tonight. Thank you.
Yeah, that's why I called. I had, I literally had no clue that was going on until I saw that, the, the 60-day thing that they done to know on the door. So I, that day, I called my contractor, and I was like, I would have, you know, not happy. I was, I would have been, I feel like I should have been informed that this was going on. Otherwise, I, I just, why'd you leave me in the dark type thing? And hence, you know, now I'm doing this now. But, yeah, he never, I was never, I was never notified by him at all. Which shocked me because, I mean, he would, he would stop by all the time, and I was, we talked all the time through, through text message or through phone call. He stopped by a couple of times just to make sure, you know, everything looked good to him, like his workers were doing well and stuff, and then, you know, it was.
I got a couple more questions. How, how high is the fence?
I think, it's six, well, I don't know, what's, I'm trying to think of like a standard stockade fence.
In the back?
Sorry?
The fence is in the back?
I haven't, it's around the whole yard. It just got, it just got replaced. It just got replaced, actually, when we had that stretch of like, really 90-degree.
So if you stand in there, can you see through the fence?
No, you cannot.
Okay, so it's got to be a six-feet fence?
It's, yeah, I'm pretty sure it's six feet.
Just a quick question on, I know you expanded the deck, so now it makes more sense. You went four feet wider.
Correct.
If I'm looking at your pool, how far is the side of the pool to now the expansion with the deck? Because I know you gained four feet, so that should give you more room walking toward the pool.
Yes.
So, right there. So if you look in that corner to the right, walking to the pool, how far is that from the pool? So you gained four feet now, and what was it originally? Like, to the pool? Four feet, six feet?
You're saying like from the side, like from the side of the pool?
Can you point it, Laura, on this? Yeah, right there. Yeah, if you go back to the other one, you can see it better. Yeah. So right there.
Oh, okay.
Because now you gained four feet in there. So what was it originally? Because to me, it looks like narrow, somebody could fall down.
Well, it wasn't too, but it was, I think it was six feet or more.
Okay, so you got about 10 feet now?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. That's why I needed to see, because in there, I can't tell if it's, you know, six right now.
Right, right.
So.
No, it's 10.
It used to be six, and now you have extra four, so that gives you 10 on that side?
On the side.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And it looks like to me, the width of your pool actually is 26, not 20, right? The, I mean, the, the deck? What is the width of the deck?
Six, six, I'm sorry.
26.
The deck?
Yeah. It looks like on, it said the new one, 32 by 26 deck. Is that correct, Laura? Just confirming these numbers.
I thought it was 20, I think it was 20, the boards were 20.
It said new, 32 by 26. On that chart, if you zoom in, you could see it. It said, right? So you, looking at it from the chart that was provided, it said new deck, 32 feet by 26.
That's, okay, it's.
So you don't think that number is correct?
Well, I know it was.
Because earlier you told me it was 20.
Yeah, the board, that's what we, we have.
Right.
That's why I said we settled on the 20-foot, because I didn't want to get anything bigger. I wanted to go just exactly what the board would be so we didn't have to cut. There would be no additional, like, wasting of materials, so.
Okay, now let me ask you this last question. Did you, did you already pay your contractor for this project or?
Yeah, it's all done, yeah.
Fully paid?
Fully paid, yeah.
And you said you called him and he did not call you back?
No, no, I did call him.
And? Is anything he can, he can do to reduce this variance? There's any, have you discussed with him, like, any possibility to, to reduce it a little bit or alter it a little bit or anything like?
No, I didn't. I just, it kind of was, said, you know, I filled the paperwork out, and then I'm going to have a, a meeting on August 18th, and you know, and he basically was just, kind of was like, well, you know, you know, just go through, you know, he didn't really offer any suggestion.
Right, but my question, is it going to cost you anything if you were to have him alter it?
Ah, good question. I don't, I don't know, honestly. It's a good, I'd have to look to see what his contract says. I honestly don't know. I didn't, I didn't ask.
Because earlier we talked about that you applied for the permit, it was denied, and he still built it.
Yeah.
And that's without your permission. He still built it.
Oh, I know, yeah, I know. I didn't, I had no clue that, that that went on. I really didn't.
And we, the town did tell you that it was denied and he still built it?
Yeah.
We told the contractor, and he still built it?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm good.
Any other comments from the board?
Yeah, I have a question. Who's the contractor?
Who's the contractor?
It was Joseph Vitale.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience wishing to be heard on this matter? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, thank you.
Is there anyone wishing to make a motion on this?
All right, Madam Chair, I, I'm, I'm gonna make a motion. This is a very awkward variance, but I'm gonna make a motion to approve this variance. To me, this deck was already there. The applicant seems to be some misunderstanding between the contract and himself, and, uh, we're approving only three-feet yard setback in here. The deck was replaced, so, uh, to a better deck. The applicant did not have any other alternative, because again, he was misled by somebody that they told him that he can have, uh, three-feet yard setback. So was this undesirable change on the neighborhood? We got a good letter from the neighbors. They don't object to it. Again, in this situation, there's no detriment to any nearby properties. The applicant does have a privacy fence around his property, and, and nobody can see it from the road, or as he claimed, the neighbor can't even see it. So whether the request is substantial, yes, it is substantial, and again, the deck is already built. It's an unfortunate situation for us here. But it was stated that there was a very old deck, and it was replaced with a new material, and, and fortunately, the dimension was expanded, but it seems like the deck as much as meets the applicant for what they use it for. They seem to enjoy the deck more than the house sitting outside. So whether the request will have adverse physical or environment effect on the neighborhood, the new deck or the old deck cannot be seen from the neighbors or the road because of the fence surrounding the property. Was this self-created? It was self-created after we discussed all this stuff. But again, the builder seemed to already build it and put it in place. But again, was all this said, the applicant replaced an older deck, and it was in need of replacement for safety reason. And again, I gotta say, the neighbor, they were okay with it. For all these reasons, I'm gonna approve this variance.
A motion's been made, is it seconded?
Yes, I'll, I'll second the motion, not only for the reasons stated, but also because the applicant made an effort, or at least considered adding to the deck to the, to the left, towards the middle of the property where there's just yard. Couldn't do that for a good reason, because the deck would have blocked the back door, so it wasn't feasible to do it in that direction. I, I also sensed that the applicant probably would have been amenable to maybe even reducing the size of the deck, had he been given the opportunity, which the builder did not give him that opportunity. Once the builder found out the permit was, was denied, he just went ahead and built the deck. So at that point, the deck existed in, in a, violating the zoning ordinance, and unfortunately, the homeowner was left stuck at that point and had no options. It was built, and it was in place, and he's got a fence around it. So, for, for the reasons that have all been stated, I'm gonna second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk call the rule, please?
Mr. Frary?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yes, for all the reasons stated.
Green, Mr. Green?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Bage?
Yes.
Chairperson McGuinness?
I will vote yes. However, I do want to point out that, you know, the applicant and the application says that there, that he is just replacing an existing structure, but if it was truly replacing an existing structure, it would be on the same footprint, and we would not be here talking about a variance. It is an unfortunate situation, and, you know, I would encourage anyone in this situation to really do their research on the contractor. But your, the motion carries, your variance has been granted, so good luck.
You can enjoy that deck.
I think I still even have the text message. No, I sent them about the whole, if the eyes needed to see it, I can show you.
Nope, you're all set, you're done.
Thank you, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Will the clerk call the next case, please?
The appeal of Mickey Persaud for a variance from Section 220-19H2 of the zoning ordinance of the Town of Niskiun as it applies to the property at 213 Park Ridge Drive, Niskiun, New York, located in the R2 medium densities residential zoning district, to maintain a driveway exceeding the 33% lot width allowed by code. Section 22-19H2 states, driveways and residential front yards, driveway shall be permitted in the front yards of lots used for residential purposes to serve as access points to the lot by vehicle traffic. Each lot shall have at least one, but not more than two points of access. A single driveway width between the building line and the street line of residential lots shall not exceed 33 feet wide or 33% of the actual front yard width as measured at the building setback line, whichever is less, and no point of the municipal right-of-way shall be paved in excess of this requirement. The lot has 81 feet of frontage at the setback line, therefore, a driveway width of 26.73 feet is allowed. As constructed, the driveway width is 30.5 feet, which exceeds 33% of the lot by width by 3.77 feet. Therefore, 3.77-foot driveway width variance is required between the building line and street line and within the municipal right-of-way. 12 notices were sent out, zero responses.
I'd like to invite the applicant to come forward.
Hello?
So, so again, I just want to let you know that we are operating with six members of the board. You are required, in order for your variance to pass, to have four affirmative votes. It can be four out of six or four out of seven. If you choose, you can adjourn your case until it can be heard by a full board. Do you wish to proceed?
Yes, please.
Okay, please state your name and address for the record, and then tell us about your project.
Yes, my name is Mickey Persaud, and my address is 213 Park Ridge Drive. Initially, Barbera Homes, they included in the contract because it's a new-built home. So I just moved in, and I contacted the, the pavement company, which was Harbor Roads. And I asked them, I'm like, is there a chance that I can extend my driveway on a width to just add a little bit more for the front yard? Because I have the space. And they said, yeah, that it was okay. So, I went ahead and I did that, and then they paved it, and it was all okay. And I thought, you know, everything was within guidelines, I really didn't know. And then Tom, or one of the building, one of the building or zoning inspector came after it was paved and told me that, hey, you exceeded the width on the driveway, and we can't, oh, no, sorry. I was told I had to apply for another permit that, for the paving, the extra paving that I did. So I said, okay, I'll apply. And I think it was Tom who came and said that you exceeded the width of the driveway, and I was like, oh, man. So then he goes, if you have two options, is either you try and keep it as it is, because it's already done, or you can cut the driveway back and put some kind of lawn or something, because you can't exceed the width on that, or I can file the variance. So I said, okay, I'll do the variance and see if I can get it, you know?
Okay, why did you make the driveway wider?
I, I did it because the whole front yard is there. I had the space, and I have four kids. I, they like playing basketball and just have fun in the yard a little bit, and then there's more space on the other side with the grass and all of that. So I figured, you know, if it's there, I'm making a little use of the front yard. And I said, okay, might as well do that. And on top of it, usually, because I had, my, most of my family is here, and most of my wife's family is here, grandparents, so when we do a little get-together, there's no off-street parking there, because it's a big cul-de-sac. So I, you know, getting people, they just come and park, you know, my parents or whoever comes, they just park their car there, of not obstructing anyone or anything. But I really didn't know that it was gonna violate any laws. If I had known that it was 26 feet, I probably, I would have just did it abiding by the code, but I found it out after it was paved.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, I, I have a question here. First of all, Park Ridge Drive is kind of a circle or an oval shaped, is that right?
That's correct.
And where on that is your home?
I am the, well, there's two houses buildings, so I'm the third house on the left.
Okay.
Sorry, fourth house on the left, I'm sorry.
Okay. When the builder built the house, did they put in a, an area of what would be gravel or unpaved driveway for you?
Yeah, they did, yeah.
All right, and do you, did that ever get paved before this, this, this company came and did it?
No, because they were the company that was gonna come to, and they were waiting until it's warm, which was till like April, I think it was end of April, beginning of May. And then I said, you know, my wife and I decided to say, okay, if we can have it a little bit wider, you know, let's do that.
So, the paving that was done by this, I'm sorry, what was the company's name?
Harbor Roads.
So Harbor Road came in, that was both the original and only paving that was done?
Yes.
And you would have had that done anyway, just to put in the driveway after construction was done?
Yes.
And as part of that, you asked them if you could expand it a little bit? Now, if I'm facing the front of your house, the driveway's on which side?
It's on the left side.
Okay, and when you did the expansion, did you expand it which way? Did you take it to the left or to the right?
To the left.
Okay, because you had some extra...
Yeah, I had about, I think it was like 15 or 16 feet, somewhere around there. And I think they left either roughly about four or five feet of my grass lawn going into the neighbor, so it's not, not even close to the neighbor. So the neighbor put a fence, like a privacy fence on that line there. It would still be like four or five feet grass and no, no gravel or anything there.
So when that was, that expansion took place of what originally was there as your driveway, that, the, the company just paved the whole thing one time?
Yes.
All right. And you indicate that your, your, your kids use it, you use it for parking, your kids use it. How close is the neighbor to that side where you did the expansion?
The neighbor, the, the neighbor's house?
Yeah.
From the end of the gravel, you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, just approximately is...
Because they're like 15 feet, is the same feet, I think it's either 19 or 20 feet away from the gravel from the edge of their house, maybe a little bit more, but that's roughly what I, what I think it is.
Now, just so I understand, I'm looking at a photograph of Park Ridge Drive. It looks like it's an oval, and then there's a road that goes right through the middle of it, is that right? Or no?
Right through the middle.
In other words, I see three houses sitting up on the top of this oval? Am I, am I in the wrong spot here?
So there's, there's just one, so you, you come on, I think it's Banker?
Okay.
Unless the, the name, yeah.
Yeah.
Then you go in, there's only one entrance in and one entrance out, so it's a big cul-de-sac.
Okay.
So you just basically goes around. There's no other road, like in the mid, there's houses, oh, sorry, there's houses in the middle.
In the middle of the oval road?
Yes.
Okay, and you said how many houses were there?
In the oval?
Yeah.
It's, they're still building, so I don't know, there's probably like eight, nine. I haven't really paid attention. But there's, I think there's two more houses that's going up right now.
And it looks like, as I look at this photograph, as I see the other houses, essentially, the, the driveways are pretty, pretty much all the same in the, in the way they're situated, either to the left or to the right of the, the main house?
That's correct.
Okay, and yours just happens to be three feet, about three feet bigger than the other driveway?
Yeah, because I, I did the, the expansion of the width and not knowing that that was the, because I did contact Harbor Roads, and I said, you know, whatever the law is, whatever the code is, however amount you think I can get this done. And, you know, they said, okay, so I kind of leave it up to them, and I also contacted, I don't know his last name, but Rich, he's one of the builders from Barbera Homes. And I was like, hey, am I violating? I just tried to make sure. I know I didn't contact the town or anything. I figured, you know, it's a new-built home. I didn't really know if, so I said, if, if I'm violating anything, can you just let me know or whatever? And, you know, I had no objection, and the pave was made, and then, I don't know, I think, I don't know if one of the inspector was around or if it was called. I, I don't know what happened, I was actually at work. And then I was told I had, I exceeded the paving, so I have to apply for another permit. So I said, okay, that's fine, you know, I came and I applied for the permit, but it was denied by Tom because he said it's too wide, so he can't approve that. So I said, okay, but it was already paved that, when he did mention that.
Okay, and, and Laura, just so I'm clear, the, the, the size of the driveway is calculated by the amount of frontage on the road, uh, for the house?
Oh, I needed myself. That's correct, because it's 81 feet, so it can either be 33 feet, so your lot would have to be 99 feet wide, or it's 33% or whatever it is, so, yeah.
Right, and we, we're not dealing with a setback issue, we're not dealing with a lot line issue, we're not dealing with anything other than just the road frontage of his house. He's exceeded the size, the permissible size of the driveway because of the road frontage of his house?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Persaud?
Yeah.
I may thank you for being here. I've got a couple questions, uh, straight up. You know, I took, took a ride in the neighborhood, and I noticed some of the houses are up and built and occupied, and some are, are up but don't seem to be quite occupied yet. They're almost ready for occupation. And then there's some that are, just have farther way to go in the building process, correct?
Yeah.
And, basically, if your variance is granted, you're gonna have three lanes of cars in front of your house, two of which will be right in front of the garage, and then the extra lane to the left, correct?
Yes.
And everybody else in the neighborhood has two lanes with their driveway directly in front of their garage, correct?
Yes.
All right, so yours is gonna be, if the application's granted, the only one in this new development that has three lanes instead of two, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Well, let me ask you, you got a garage, right?
Yeah, I do.
What, what do you keep in the garage?
I currently, I have, I, because I'm in the process of moving, so I still have like all my outside equipment. I have a, a lawnmower, the pressure washer, snow blower, I have like a whole bunch of tools, because I do HVAC service.
Right, you got, you got your ruck truck right there.
Yes.
All right, and in the wintertime, are you gonna make a little room in the garage to park the cars to get them out? At least two of them from being covered with snow?
Uh, maybe just one, maybe just a family car, because I'm not gonna have a... Uh, maybe with just one, maybe just a family car, because I'm not gonna have enough space to put two cars in there. I can't. There's not enough space with what I have in there.
Yep, so you'll have half the garage with uh various items. The other half the garage, should you choose, would have a car that can be parked in it. And with the two lanes in your driveway directly in front of your garage, you could theoretically have uh your van, your business van.
Yes.
And then three other uh vehicles, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, so how many cars, how many cars do you have? How many cars are owned by members of your family?
I currently, over from my, between my wife and I, we have four cars, including the company's car. And uh my sister-in-law and my 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 mom usually comes over and they either babysit my kids or something. And I, it's just one car coming out, but they're usually in and out. And in the afternoon, I go either go grab my kids or they're there. And they just come out and just enjoy the yard if if there's not no cars on there. So when my mom leaves, you know, I'll pull the car over a little bit and just give them the room so they can enjoy the yard a little bit, play a little bit outside.
Sure, I I appreciate that. Let, uh just if you could help me out. How many people who reside in your home currently have cars? Not people who visit.
Oh, okay.
Appreciative of family members visiting.
Okay.
Certainly, I I totally hear you.
It's just that it's gonna just be my, me and my wife, it's just the two of us.
So you have your business van?
Yes.
And between you and your wife and your other residents of your house, how many other vehicles are there?
Three.
So there's a total of three vehicles?
Yes.
And if you have only two lanes in front of your garage and you're not using the parking space in the garage or either the two parking spaces of the garage, you'd have to park the three vehicles in the two lanes that are right in front of your garage, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So the concern is, and correct me if I'm wrong, you're telling me with your family situation, you have your uh family, a family member coming to uh spend time with the kids?
Yes.
They could park in the gr- uh the two lanes that are right in front of the garage, though, could they not?
Yes, at the time, yes.
Might be a little inconvenient because you have to move cars around sometimes.
Yes, it it does, you do have to move cars around and the the reason for the the third car, because we normally need two cars because my wife work and I work. So when I come home, I can't use my company vehicle to go and pick my kids up if I have to go pick them up or if I have to go anywhere. The other car is a pickup truck because I do do like side service on here and there and I I can't use the the personal, my personal vehicle because it's a car. And I can't use a service truck because it's not legal for me to do that. I can't use a company's vehicle.
I understand. So if your application's not granted and you can't have that third third uh row of parking on the left-hand side, would you be able, you and your family be able to park in the two lanes that are uh lined up in in front of the garage?
We would, but it will still be a little bit of it, like a inconvenience of moving cars in and out and that's just the only thing.
Yep, have you talked to, oh, well, let me not assume anything. Are there people who are living in the house immediately to the left as you're facing your house? In other words, the people uh who you're building at two oh nine?
Uh huh, yes, I do.
Is there someone living there?
Yes.
Have you had a chance to speak with them about the fact that you got, you're asking for three lanes of parking instead of two?
Yes, I did and uh she, I even spoke to them this afternoon. I'm like, if I'm, if I'm if it's bothering you or if it's thing in your yard, just let me know and I'll try and take care of it. They said they had no issues because I guess they received a letter and they said if they have an appeal, they just have to show up. So they're not gonna show up because it doesn't bother them.
So you've spoken to them and you you've just told me the sum and substance of the conversation. How about the people who live directly across the street? It's elevated, isn't it? They're up higher than you are?
Yes, a little bit, slightly, yeah.
Yep, how about those folks? Have you talked to them about the fact, just excuse me, that the fact that, you know, you're making this application to go from three lanes, from two lanes to three lanes?
Well, they just moved in and this was filed before they moved in, so they just closed on the house. And uh
I'm I'm not being critical of you, I'm just asking you, have you had a chance to speak to them?
I did speak to them, but I didn't speak to them about the driveway and they didn't pose no concern on my driveway either. So I just did a friendly greet, welcome to the neighborhood. Just normal conversation. I I didn't ask for about my driveway and they didn't pose any concern. It was just a normal conversation.
Yep, and if your application's not granted, you're saying because there are times you have visitors over, they would uh before, if if the spaces were occupied in the two lanes directly in front of the garage, they'd have to find somewhere else to park?
Yes.
And that would be on the street, the street being Park Ridge?
Yes.
Is there any pro- is there any prohibition of any parking on the street?
It's not, uh I I'm not, actually, I don't know if there were, there's mixed uh conversation about that, that you're like, you can't park there for a long period of time because it's not like a full two-lane like that. It's like barely fitting two cars in and out if you were to go in and out because it's a cul-de-sac. So if you were to park a car there, you're inconveniencing someone to go in and out and you have to go around.
Right.
Or if you park, you know, if you just, if you have a couple, like say two family member come over to your house, they have to park on the road. And that's inconvenient and and you can only fit one car per a neighbor, so one will be here and one will be in front of my yard or something, and then it's just inconvenient because you still have to go around every single car.
I understood. Uh, there's no sign that's that's standing that says no parking on this side?
No.
All right, so it could be done, but you've explained that it would force cars to have to travel slightly, slightly different travel path to keep in their lane of travel, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Laura, uh can you tell us about the parking rules on, in that development?
Um, it doesn't have any specific prohibitions on parking except for what occurs town-wide. So that's no overnight parking in the winter months. Um, um, that planning board did approve a smaller right-of-way for that subdivision than is typical. Um, and I wasn't there, I wasn't the planner when they did that, but it's a fifty-foot right-of-way instead of a sixty, I believe. It's smaller.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, one on uh if uh now that you know that this is more than thirty percent, thirty-three percent of the uh area, would you have designed it differently?
Yes, definitely. I would have been, I would have gone with whatever was required, which is why I asked in the first place because I just moved in Iskuna and I didn't know all the rules and all the regulations and because it's a newer-built home. I tried to get it paved once and, you know, see if it can be done and I had no objection on anything and I thought it was okay.
So you would just basically reduce the
Yes, I would have, definitely. I would have said, okay, just if I had known it was because it's only supposed to be twenty-six and a half or whatever, just do twenty-six wide for me and it wouldn't be any issues.
Uh, often when you purchase a new house, uh everything is spelled out for you. What you're going to be getting is the driveway part of the contract.
All it says was a two-car garage, a two-car paved driveway.
So it does say two-car paved?
Yeah, that's that's all it says.
Thank you.
Just a couple of questions, please. Uh, you said you talked to the company Harbor?
Harbor Roads.
Uh, can you uh come back and tell me what you talked to them about and what would they do if this was not approved for you? Can they uh eliminate the three-point-seven uh feet that you're requesting?
They said if uh, after finding out, I did contact them like you asked and they said I will have to pay more additional now for that removal, so it has to be cut. They will, I guess they'll come and do the cutting, but they won't reimburse anything or they won't do anything. I have to pay back out of pocket. Plus, uh whoever look is gonna do the landscaping, which they don't have to hire another la- uh landscaper to come back and fill it and make it up to code.
All right, let let's go back a little bit. You probably said that. Uh, but I just want to put it in the minutes to clarify. So when you hired this company and you said you talked, as the chairperson said, uh you talked to who build your house, they didn't tell you about the size of the driveway you were gonna have?
No, they 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 said I'm allowed that
They did tell you you're allowed twenty-six, twenty-five?
No, they they just told me I'm getting a two-cars, a two-lane driveway. And I asked if it's, is it okay, can I extend it one more lane? They said, yeah, and no one said anything about twenty-six. If I had known there was twenty-six, I would have told Harbor Roads.
Okay, did you call the town to clarify the information that you needed to build a driveway? What's the percentage of the driveway?
No, I didn't. I did not.
So did the mister, whoever, the Harbor Company, did they tell you, because they should know? They probably put a lot of driveways in Iskuna, they should know. Did they tell you specifically that you're going over the widths of the driveway?
No, they didn't and I I specifically asked them that. I'm like, can, you know, however, how much I can go. And then he said, well, you have to leave at least four to five feet away from your neighbors if they were to put a fence. And this much you can put the pave, so they made it on the discretion that they they can go that far. I didn't make the decision. I just say, okay, however wide I can go, can you just do it for me? Just make sure it's within code and I'm not obstructing anyone, so.
Okay, hold on one second. Laura, can you put that picture back on you had earlier? Just, no, the, yeah. Now, is your house in the top right corner there? Is that yours? Which one is your house?
No, uh, when you go in the street, is it okay for me to go point it?
Yeah, yeah, go point it out, please. All right, where's your driveway there?
My driveway is towards the left on, next to my house, um, next to my neighbor's house.
To the left?
Yes, uh, to my right here, but if you're looking at the house, towards the left.
So, okay, you can come back, please. So your neighbor, you have the extra lane that is close to your neighbor?
Yes.
And uh do you have a fence between you and your neighbor?
No fence.
No fence. So if you were to park your uh HVAC van and your neighbor's gonna be able to see that?
Yes.
Okay. Tell me a little bit, when when you found out you can only have twenty-six-point-seventy-three inches of a driveway. If if you were to go back to twenty-six-point-seventy-three, what would that eliminate? You could still fit three cars in there.
Yeah, yeah, I think I can, I
You could still fit three cars, so I don't see, I don't see the problem because the town is allowing uh point su- thirty-three for the dimension of you, you have the widths of eighty-one feet.
Yeah.
So you're allowed point three-three, so that gives you twenty-six and more.
Yeah.
So, so that should still give you enough room to park your cars and not to have an awkward driveway where the neighbors and everybody's gonna wonder because once we approve a person with a driveway the size, everybody's gonna say, they have it, why can't I have it?
Yeah, I understand that.
So did you look at any of those options?
Yes, I I did and I I, that's why I called the Harbor Roads. I said, you know, uh this was not up to code from after Tom, I was talking to the town.
Right.
Zoning and is there any way that, you know, we can reduce this by any chance? He said, go, he's, they said unfortunately, no, it's already paid for and it was already done. So if I have, if I wanted to be cut back to what it is, I'll have to pay again, pay extras to what I had or initially paid to have it removed. So they'll have to, I'll have to pay them to come back and cut it. And I also will have to pay a landscaper to come back and put dirt and plant grass and everything else.
Thank you. You answered my questions. Thank you.
Laura, if the variance was denied and he had to have his driveway removed, how much time does he have to remove it?
It's a decent amount of time. I think it may be ninety days. It's a decent amount of time, as long as they're working on it too. We work with them. I don't know that timeframe off the top of my head, but it's more than like fourteen days. It's like ninety.
Okay, great, thank you.
I I believe perhaps this was covered, but how much would it cost?
He didn't say, I I just
Did you ask?
I I did. He said he was gonna get back to me and he never got back to me and I told him that I did have a date for today. You know, I don't know if it was, what's gonna happen. So he didn't say. He said they will, you will have to pay the guys to come out there. And I don't know of the labor, how how much it will cost.
Are there any other questions from the board? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So hearing none, uh is there anybody who'd like to make a motion either for or against this project? Oh, it looks like, did you want to?
Just if I, if I may, Madam Chairman?
I was just gonna say we need to make sure that there's no members of the public that wish to speak.
Sorry, any members of the public wishing to be heard on this? Thank you. Yes, go ahead, Mr. Green.
That was my concern, just for the record.
Okay, yep.
It's apparent there's no one else in the room, but
Yes, yes.
I'm just getting it for the
There was a gentleman. Did he leave?
He did.
There's no one in the room right now.
He left, but we're also, we're also allowing people to appear virtually, so I just wanna make sure that we don't have anybody.
Okay, hearing nothing from the audience, is anyone on the board interested in making a motion either for or against? Okay, I'm gonna make a motion uh to deny the variance. Um, the benefit uh can be achieved by other means and that other means is having a driveway up to code. Um, it does not, uh, it does produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. It would be the only driveway of its size in a neighborhood that was designed with uniformity. Um, the variance is substantial. You know, as, are there any adverse physical or environmental effects? You know, very possibly without, with extra pavement on the ground that does affect drainage and greenery. Um, this was self-created. Uh, and for all those reasons, I, my motion is to deny the variance. A motion's been made. Is there a second?
I will second the motion.
A motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk call the roll, please? Mr. Freary?
I'm gonna vote no on the motion and let me tell you why. We just finished hearing a a a an appeal for a variance where a deck was built, already built, put in place. An option for that applicant was to cut off that deck so it didn't violate zoning ordinance. Was never suggested by this board. If you want to talk about consistency, let's have consistency. The issue with this is, we just finished with a applicant who was told by his contractor. Uh, his contractor was given a directive by this town that the permit was denied and he built the deck anyway. And we sympathized with the applicant and approved his variance. We have another applicant before us who um, and to be quite honest with you, I would, I I I would venture to guess that there's not a member on this board who was aware that your driveway is the width of your driveway is factored on the percentage of the frontage of your yard. I've been on this board possibly longer than anyone in this room and I can tell you, I wasn't aware of that. So I don't know if the zoning board is not is not aware of that, how an applicant would be aware of that. Who would you ask? First of all, you'd ask your builder. Can I put in a bigger driveway? The builder says, yeah, sure. This is the builder that gets a permit, that deals directly with the town. The applicant also asked the paving company. He has a driveway, a two car driveway that's built and provided as part of the cost of his house. He asked for a slightly bigger driveway. And he's told by the paving company, sure, that's not a problem. So I think in reliance on the builder and the paving company, this applicant didn't approach the town, I would suspect, although he didn't testify to this, I would suspect that this applicant would also tell you that when a building permit was obtained, he didn't deal with the town. And I would suspect that if there were inspections done of his property during building, he didn't deal with the town. So I think it's unreasonable by this board to assume that anyone who's looking at the size of their driveway, the first person they call would be the town to find out what the zoning ordinance is. As far as the, the, the criteria that we're looking at, as I look at the driveways in this area and the photographs of the driveways in this area, I don't feel that it's out of character with this neighborhood. First of all, your driveway is flat. Your driveway is not like the height of a house. Your driveway is not like an, an expansion on a house that, that impedes on the lot lines, the setbacks. It's not like a six foot fence versus a four foot fence. It's flat, it's on the ground, it's barely visible. And if you look at the, and I have, quite a few, looked at quite a few of the photographs of this neighborhood, as I look at this, I don't find it out of character. There have been questions about three lanes versus two lanes. This applicant has indicated he's got four vehicles, including his work van. Those four vehicles can be accommodated in the two lane driveway. So it's not like you're gonna have five, six, seven vehicles, which is gonna disrupt the, the appearance of the neighborhood. In terms of the environmental effects, I don't think we can assume that there are drainage issues or assume that there are environmental issues. That's not been brought before this board. The fact is that the paving is done for the two lanes, it's done by the paving company. The fact that there is an additional, what, three feet or X number of feet, I guess three, slightly over three feet that require a variance, I don't think it's reasonable for this board to assume that those three feet automatically create an environmental effect which doesn't exist if there's less than three feet. This applicant is posed with a hardship if he has to cut it. He's gotta pay for it. He's gotta hire a landscaper to landscape it. And all this was done because his reliance on his builder and the paving company told him it was okay. Just like the applicant who didn't realize his building permit was denied and the deck was built by his builder. I think for consistency's sake, this board needs to apply the same standards that it's applied. The concern that we will now have three lane requests for variance, this board can deal with that, assuming that the applicants who make those applications come before this board to get variances before it's done. If not, we may be in the same position that this applicant is in. He's relied upon, he's relied upon a builder and a paving company, just like many of the applicants that have come before us. Is it substantial? I think given what would have been there, had it not been, been expanded versus what was there because it was expanded, I don't view that as being possibly slightly, but I don't view it as being such that it should qualify for a, for a denial of this variance. It is self-created. That's not determinative before this board. Most of the variances that are requested are self-created. For those reasons, I would vote no on the motion.
Mr. Latif?
I, this is a tough one. And again, I'm gonna vote no on the motion. And the reason I'm voting no, I, I do agree in some ways denying this, but I'm voting no. And my reasons, again, the applicant depended on the contractor, depended on the person who put the driveway in there, showed that he was willing to have it to the size what our town would ask of him. But unfortunately, as Mr. Frary said, this is a hardship for the applicant because now it's gonna cost him a lot of money to put it back. The way I lean on it, if it's 3.3 feet, so it's really not a full driveway. So it's gonna be two big driveway, two, two lane driveway. And again, the neighbors were hoping that people will start coming to the town and ask him before they start building, before they get themselves in this situation with spending money like the, the, the person before about the deck. They already built it. It's gonna cost them money. Same for you. It's gonna cost you money. So I'm hoping if you come in the future for something else that you would know, to check with the town first. So for all these reasons, I'm gonna vote no on the motion.
Mr. Daley?
I, I listened to this very carefully. And I had deep concerns about what was going on here.
I don't know.
And it's a great expense for you to. Get it fixed and whatnot. And everything that was said is, is very true. So I'm gonna vote, I'm gonna vote no on it for the same reasons that my colleagues voted no. Thank you.
Mr. Green?
Yes, I'm voting yes on the motion. I am very sympathetic to your, your situation. It's just that in my mind, your three lane driveway, as opposed to everyone else's two in this new development, does not fit into the character of the neighborhood. So I, I am sympathetic. However, I am constrained to vote in favor of the motion to deny the variance. And, and for the record, we did not hear how much it would cost. Certainly, it will be a pretty penny. But you did not come here armed with information that, at least in my mind, might have been important for me to hear.
Mr. Beg?
I would vote no on the motion. For the various arguments that have been made, I fully agree with the argument around consistency. Because we just heard the case on the deck, which was in my mind pretty similar. Although I do believe that the homeowner has the responsibility to, you know, make sure that they're in compliance. But since we approved the deck, this is not a very dissimilar case. And in terms of the neighborhood characteristics, I mean, the neighbor, the next door neighbor is the most affected by this. And they seem to be fine with it. And in my mind, taking cars off the road and onto the driveway is better than leaving them on the road. So for those reasons, I would say I, I deny the motion.
Chairperson McGinnis?
I vote yes on the motion. If we're, the board is asked to be consistent, that would mean anytime someone requests a variance for a fence, we would grant the variance for the fence. I looked at these cases tonight based on the individuality of each of the properties, which I believe we are asked to do. There's a difference between a deck and a driveway. There's a difference between Eastern Parkway and Park Ridge. For those reasons, I vote yes. So the motion to deny the variance was not approved. So this is double negative. We will entertain a counter motion at this time.
Madam Chairperson, I'm going to move that we grant the variance as requested. I, I would agree with my colleague that we would charge all the residents of this town with having some knowledge and being aware of the zoning regulations. But if that was the case, we wouldn't need a zoning board. So the problem is, is I think it's reasonable, very reasonable, for those of us that are not savvy to construction, to rely on the people who do it for a living, the builders, the pavers, the electricians, the plumbers, to advise us what our obligations are. And while I have the utmost respect for Mr. Canizo and his, and his team of, of people, they're, they're charged with simply going out and telling people what you have built or what you propose is, is or is not within our zoning ordinances. However, they're dealing with, no offense, an uneducated public who doesn't know what the requirements are. So unfortunately, in this case, this was done after the fact. Still, from a consistency basis, and, and I couldn't disagree more that we would approve every fence for what it is. We have approved fences over my numerous years on this board for a variety of reasons. Because they've been built and our residents have relied on the representations made to them, whether they were within the zoning requirements. And we've disapproved a number of fences for a variety of other reasons. We take each case as they come to us and the circumstances of what they are when they come to us. And that's why we're here. I move that we grant this variance. Reasons I've stated, both in the denial of the prior motion and this motion, provide the basis.
There's been a motion made. Is there a second?
I would second the motion.
Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Frary?
Yes, for all the reasons stated.
Mr. Latif?
Yes, for all the reasons stated. And I just want to add that we do look at every case separately, even if they are the same situation. As Mr. Frary pointed out, the fences, we have approved fences for certain people for safety or for certain sides of the roads. And to add to the driveway, again, the applicant is looking at eliminating parking on the circle when he has visitors and so on. So in some way, that's gonna take the load off the, the outside parking from the property. So for all these reasons, I'm gonna vote yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes, for all the reasons.
Mr. Green?
No.
Mr. Beg?
Yes.
Chairperson McGinnis?
No. There were four affirmative votes. So the motion has, the, the motion has carried and your variance has been granted. Thank you for joining us here tonight.
Thank you so much.
You don't have to spend all this money.
Thank you, guys.
Is there anyone else wishing to be heard before the board? Hearing none?
Have a good evening, sir.
Hearing none, I would like to know if there's a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I make a motion, Madam Chair.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.